Thank you, Margot. Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Welcome to our regular meeting of the April 25th, 2023. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order. Second is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on April 11th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held April 11th, 2023?
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is, audience of citizens, any business to come before the board? Anyone?
I'd like to reserve something when I find out what you're talking about on the last...
Okay.
The last thing on the agenda.
Yeah. I'm not sure that's entirely appropriate, but we'll have our conversation and see how that goes.
I may not have any questions.
No, I'm sure you will. Let's see how that all goes. Anyone else? Okay. Next item up on the agenda is discussion of possible action on waste reduction program. This is something, Jim, you're aware, and I'm sure most of the audience is aware at this point, we began a program at the transfer station based on utilizing a DEDP grant
Yep.
to begin a food scraps collection, but really it's the impetus to begin a bigger program of waste reduction.
Right.
Deep River, we're doing extremely well with it thus far. It's saved us some good money if it continues. It's a... The savings that we're seeing, though, I think, are as much from thought going into what gets thrown into the dumpster as much as it is just removing the food scraps because the tons don't add up. We're saving about, or we're pulling out, we're throwing away about 5,000 pounds of food scraps a month, but we're saving about 20 tons of garbage a month. So it doesn't add up as far as that goes, but it is a substantial savings. We pay $116 a ton.
That's getting people thinking.
Yeah. So we are moving in this direction. In order to, what we need to do, though, with this grant is we need to put in front of the town at the beginning around November, we'll probably start in August, to get together a plan as to whether we're going to actually adopt this as law, or whether we're going to find some other way to do this, how we're going to move forward with it. We aren't required, as a result of this grant, to adopt it, while I believe that it's the right thing, that's a good first step. I also believe that the state's going to mandate this kind of...
At some point, I believe they will.
So what I'd like to do is create an ad hoc committee, an advisory committee, to meet, to us and to the town, that would work on how best to move forward. That committee would work, do independent research if they like, but also work with this company that's called Waste Zero that we're working with now, to point out ways that communities across the state, across the country, and really around the world are reducing the waste, the amount that gets thrown into the ground, if you will. I think that I'd like to have a representative from planning and zoning, a representative from economic development, a couple of representatives from the sustainability group who've been...
Well, I was going to say that they have a pretty good handle on it, but just add some outside expertise or other people into that.
I'd like a representative from the Board of Selectmen, not necessarily me, to be involved in that, and a couple of other folks from either other commissions, other stakeholders, if you will, or just from the outside community. They don't necessarily have to be someone who's elected or appointed. I'd like that to run for at least a year so we can get through this program and maybe extend it because the next step on this...
How long does this program run now?
This program runs until next February.
Okay, so it's a year?
Yeah.
I thought, okay.
Yep. I don't think that we can focus, in the long run, this is not just a Deep River concern, this is a regional and a statewide concern. There are already lots of COG meetings about regionalization and how we're going to get, you know, an anaerobic digester in this area, whether we can get it in this area, this kind of thing, whether we're being required by the state to join a regional waste authority or to start our own. So that's, we're in negotiations now with the state as to how we do that as a region. I think this group can help the community understand a little bit better by how, not only we move forward as a town, but also connect us directly to, number one, Chester and Deep River, or Chester and Essex, but also the bigger regions. So I'm recommending and asking that we could get a motion to create this ad hoc committee, not with any people right now, other than, I'm going to invite folks, invite commissions to ask for a volunteer from their group, and we'll probably put it out in a newsletter or something like that to ask for a couple of citizens as well.
Yeah, I think it's the right way to go. We're doing good, and it sounds like we're doing better, the last report was, we're doing better than a lot of the other communities that have been given the same grant. So it shows, at least to me, that Deep River's very interested in doing it. And if we can continue to do it and keep it going and, you know, keep costs and waste and everything, that is, it's a good thing. So I'd make a motion to form an ad hoc committee of designated commission members and outside citizens or whatever to look into the continuing support or continuation of the program.
Okay, great. I'll second that. As part of discussion of that, I want to point out that, yes, Deep River is in fact doing much better than the other communities. Remember, we're not as big as a lot of the other communities, but percentage-wise, we are. I do think there is some interest. The question really is whether or not we make it a permanent thing on our own, whether we wait for the state to mandate it, or how we go into other programs. Pay-as-you-throw is only one. We are saving, we are saving, but in the end, I fully believe that we're not going to save a lot of money in this. What we are going to do is do the right thing for where we are. And the responsible thing for the other communities like Indiana and Illinois and Ohio and Pennsylvania that are receiving these, that those holes in the ground are not going to last forever.
And then I'm curious as to how the state or whatever is going to, or even the town, the waste haulers, people that don't go to the dump, like myself, we don't go to the, we have it picked up. And how that'll be integrated into the system for those folks, because there's community across the state that don't have dumps and they have city pickup or whatever, so it's going to have to be done somehow.
That, I think, can be part of this group's conversation. There are communities that contract only with one hauler, and that hauler is the only hauler that's allowed.
Or the city of.
Or the city.
The bigger cities, yeah.
So, good. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is tax refunds from the tax collector. This year, this week, this month, we only have one, and that is for a total of $4,119, $4,119.07.
Make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $4,119.07.
Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we received another ARPA request, the heading from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This actually falls right into, if you remember right, about a month ago, I think, we received a request for, I think, $1,500 to do, or $7,501 or the other, to do a study of parking on Main Street. At the time that we received that, I suggested that it might be...
I think it was $15,000.
$15,000, okay, sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense, $15,000. I suggested that we might want to think about a bigger scale study. Planning and Zoning has put together a proposal for a four-stage study, if you will, that are actually exactly what we need. I actually took the liberty of changing a little bit of the heading and already making a request for a grant from the state to cover this. That grant would require a 25% contribution.
By the committee.
Yep. There are other grants that I did not put it in for because they're not quite open yet, but this would fall perfectly into a STEEP grant, so if the state decides to continue that, it would be a great spot for it. And I'm not at all saying that ARPA is not the right place for at least part of it. I think it's something we should consider. It is, what I am saying, is this is a really good idea.
Oh, yeah.
It's a grand scope. It fits, it fits right into what we really need, is a continuation of, not only the downtown, but planning for the whole of the community. It falls perfect timing with the POCD and that being done. So what I'm, all I'm suggesting now is that we receive this, we talk about it a little bit, we think about it a little bit, and we'll bring it up at another, another meeting when we're talking about some other issues.
I agree that it's needed for the downtown. I don't, I don't have any money documentation, but I don't know how much money we have left in the ARPA funds.
About 300.
Yeah.
320 or something.
That's what I thought without looking, and this would, basically, this whole amount would take all of that.
Yeah.
Anybody else that's out there wanting ARPA funds wouldn't be able to get it. So we need to, we need to try and, again, prioritize like we have all along, is to, I think this is great, and if we can get, if we can get some grants and STEEP grants and whatnot to help offset some of the costs of this, and maybe some of this come from the ARPA, without eliminating all the rest of the requests with a one lump sum.
Yeah, no, and, you know, they were good enough to prioritize, and I agree, I agree with the number one, the downtown village master plan, that that would really work out, ties right into the parking plan and all that kind of thing, and the future development of the downtown. So I think it is something we need to, we need to talk about.
Absolutely.
I think it needs to become part of the ARPA conversation, but I do also, I think, feel strongly enough about it that now that I have something comprehensive, I think these numbers frankly are high, but they are a good baseline to start with. And I'd like to continue to look at other grants. I know this CEDC has got some good grants for this type of thing, and maybe we pick off one at a time, but I do think this is a very good proposal and something we need to continue to work on.
Absolutely.
So there's nothing to really vote on it, other than to continue to move it forward into our next ARPA conversation.
And this, because it's on tonight, is because this is the latest...
It just came in, so I want to make sure everybody's aware of it, everybody's thinking about it, and make sure that we continue it in our thoughts as to how we move forward. And that's what I have for the agenda. I don't know, Jane, if you had something you wanted to comment on?
No, I do kind of have a question that's... What's happening in Congress, will they want back any funds that haven't been allocated?
Yeah, that's been the case for all along.
Yep.
So are we...
Yeah, we're three quarters of the way done.
We've allocated or approved.
You've got until the end of 2024 to allocate and the end of 2026 to spend, so...
And so far, the townspeople have about a million dollars of the 1.3, we have 300,000 left. And like we were saying before, this planning and zoning request itself is 300,000. So that would, that would take care of it if we, but we need to prioritize.
You know, Congress says, hey, anything you haven't already allocated, you want back...
Oh, are you talking about doing it, doing that now?
Well, all the budget things are up now.
No, that's, that's not going to happen.
And they say that everything that's in the budget, that's already been okay by Congress, and yet they want to pull some of this back.
Yeah, I think that's a different conversation, Jane.
Okay.
But thanks for your, thanks for your question. That's what I have, so.
I don't think if there, no, I don't think of, there's anything I can think of.
Remember, we've got, well, you won't see this until too late, but we have a meeting tomorrow night to discuss the proposed budget, and our annual meeting is on May 15th at 7:30, so please come out and participate. Yeah, if that will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn at 6:49.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is the April 2023 regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. The first item on our agenda is the call to order. We will shoot to the second item, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, the March 28th meeting, and several budgets workshops. Do you want me to call, certainly the, the March 28th was a rather exciting meeting. We had that nice lady who talked about sustainability, who came from a catchy firm. The school was here, and we did ARPA, so that was a busy meeting. But would anyone like to recommend or make a motion that we accept the minutes of those meetings?
So would you?
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Who's second is John.
Come on, okay. Oh, so, all right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Audience of citizens. I see no citizens that are not elected positions, so I will say that there is no comments from citizens. Tommy, that is, that brings you to the fourth row.
By the way, did anyone see Dwayne on television this year?
No.
What did he do now?
I forget what city, but it was, he was with the unions and...
Canterbury, isn't it?
What was that?
He seemed like, he said, has a fondness for Canterbury. He talks about it virtually every day.
That was pretty good. But anyway, because everyone has the deposit record, I had Kathy, she was supposed to send it, email it to everyone, I don't know if she did or not, but she answered yesterday. But anyway, today I was on a bank tour. I went to different banks trying to see what they offered as far as rates and make sure that we're competitive. I stopped at Liberty, because that's actually one of our main banks, and I spoke to Teresa, and then also called Melissa Hurd, she's the Vice President of Government Banking, and she's usually the one that kind of reviews our rates, which she said she will review. And the ones that she'll be reviewing, if you look at our general fund accounts, the ones with the percentage rates, those are the ones that she's going to be reviewing for us. The only thing we have to watch out for is that 2022 capital improvements borrow account because we can't, by law, we can't earn a rate more than 3%. So we just have to, just have to watch that. She's also going to look at the capital non-recurring fund account, which actually that went down to 0.15. The reason for that is because we had taken up a large sum of money out of that account and put it into a different category. Rates like a million or more, they can certainly offer higher rates. She thinks that she'll be able to give us better rates than we have right now, and she'll get back to me in a couple of days. Having said that, I went down to Centerbrook to KeyBank and spoke to Tim Hanson, who's a branch manager. A lot of times you go into these branches and you can't get really the information that you need for municipal accounts, so they usually have to call their government banking department, which he did, and he emailed me to contact Cynthia Pettit, who I will be contacting, to get, to see what their rates are. And then I went to Guilford Savings Bank down in Sabre, spoke to Assistant Vice President Dave Carswell, and actually, he was, he got back to me pretty promptly this afternoon, and he gave me some, some rates that they're offering. Like money market, I'm just trying to compare our money market rates. They have a money market rate that pays 2.23, and it yields 2.25. So right now, we're higher than they are. He says with a minimum deposit balance of $500,000, he can request a higher annual percentage yield. So I'm going to, I want to see what Liberty is going to do for us. And also, they offer CDs, all these, you know, you look and you hear of rates of like 5%. Little deceiving, because usually those rates are for consumers, it's not for, you know, small businesses or municipalities. Generally, what that is, it's probably CDs, longer-term CDs, that are offering those rates. So those are consumer rates, they're not, they're not for municipalities, so just kind of remember that if people have seen those, those high rates.
And, and, I'm going to have you repeat everything you said. John, conclusion of our last meeting, said, I forget what bank you cited, it was 4.1 or something.
It was Apple.
Apple?
Apple's getting into finance, they're getting into banking. I don't know about that.
When you cease, is it a CD rate, you have to sort of commit those long terms? You have to commit for a long period of time?
Well, you know, it's funny, with Guilford, Guilford Savings Bank, they only offer to municipalities or businesses rates for three months and six months. They won't offer anything longer than that, the reason being that, you know, for municipality, you don't like to tie up your monies for, you know, a long period of time. So that's kind of the reason, reason for that. So he did give me, there were a couple, couple rates that gave him for the, you know, three months and six months. Three month was a rate of 2.96 with a yield of, annual percentage yield of 3, and for six months, it's 3.93 with a yield of 4. He also said if you're opening up, they would, for business CDs, they require a business checking account. So we would have to open up a checking account, too. And talking about CDs, remember that if you, whatever term you use, if you have to go into that, you know, break it up before the, before the, before the term expires, you're going to get heavy prepayment fees, so.
If you were to go with one of those, you have to, we would have to, you would have to commit a large portion of our dollars.
Well, not a large, you know, at least, at least, probably, well, on the, on the money market side, we'd have to go with at least 500,000. The CD is only require like a $5,000 deposit.
But you would still have to commit dollars, I mean, there were times we get paid on our dollars.
I have always tried to keep everything liquid, you know, I don't like to tie up, tie up monies. Depending on, you know, in this particular case, the rate. Now, if, if, if they come back from Liberty and give us a higher rate, you know, I think I'd like to just stay where we are, unless, you know, any other banks can, if you know many banks that, well, I know you just mentioned...
It's, I mean, I just heard, I don't know if it applies for municipal accounts.
Yeah, I know, so that's, that's it, but if you, if you're talking, you're hearing a bank that's, you know, offering a decent, decent rate, just, just let me know, and I'll be glad. I, you know, I don't want to be traveling all over the state.
No, that, that beats right into what I want to kind of done.
Yeah.
If we're talking a couple of times, you know, a couple of hundreds of percentage points, even, even maybe up to a quarter of a percentage point, I'm not sure leaving our local bank is the right thing to do. Not only because they're our local bank, but also they give us some breaks, they don't charge us for some of the transfers.
In fact, I was just going to bring that up, Angus, they, you know, they wanted to make sure I mentioned at Liberty Bank that they charge no fees. They, we, they pick up all our fees for our wire transfers, it's like $20 at a clip, no fees for the paper statements that they provide, no monthly maintenance fees, no, no charges for the checks that clear. So, I mean, all of those things, all of those things add up, and they are, as Angus said, that's, that's the only local bank we have in town, you know. So I don't, I don't mind going to maybe Webster down in Essex, and again, I went to Guilford Savings, I went to KeyBank, maybe M&amp;T, which they're over in Madison, but, you know, again, I want to feel comfortable with who I'm dealing, dealing with, too. So just to kind of give you an overview of where we are with rates, but, you know, it is interesting to go out and, and do my homework and, you know, just let you know.
When you got in the car, were you looking for rates? Would you, are you considering moving our...
No, not necessarily, not necessar, I just wanted to see what, you know, if we were in the ballpark, and we are, we definitely are, and Liberty is willing to, I think in two days, I'll find out that she's, she's going to go up on our rates. I mean, if you look at, just on that one account that we have, the municipal sweep money market account where we keep, you know, large, large balances on that, just last month in that account, we earned $13,910.74, just on that one account, that big account. So, and if you look, you know, if you look at our revenue side, you're going to, you're going to see that we're way up from last year where we are, which, of course, the rates weren't very good last year, but, I mean, we're doing extremely well. But just to, just to keep you in the loop, if you have any feedback to me, please, for me, please, please let me know. Any, any questions on that right now?
Do you have limitations on the ARPA funds? You had said, certainly the funds that we borrow, we're limited there. You're getting Essex...
No, I, I...
Do you have a limitation on that?
We can raise as much as we can.
Do we have to raise as much as we can?
It was just on the capital improvements borrow, they have the limit, limit of 3%. So we can't go any higher than that. Now, I have to check, too, is that 3% on, for the yield, or is that 3% on the non-rate?
We'll have to read the contract, yeah. I think it's the yield.
It's the yield? Okay, so that's, I'll have to check that one out. And while we're on that subject of the ARPA, the ARPA monies, thank you for this, this is, yeah. She does an awesome job on, you know, how much money that has been doled out. Right now, we've actually, the ARPA monies, we've only actually given out, we've, well, actually, the money that's been dispersed, there's only two, two, one to the Historical Society for the $53,000, one to the, for the radio system project for the fire ambulance Public Works Police Town Hall, which was 249043, and that was half of what the total amount is for that. But we've committed, you know, to several more of the organization, so when you get down to the bottom line, after we disperse to all of those that were approved, we'll have $331,308 remaining. So making some headway on that one. Let's see, if we're, I'm just comparing the general fund accounts from this month to, from last month, and we're down a little over a million dollars, $1,835.58. And after we, and that's after we take out the capital improvements borrow monies, we still have $6,400,000 left. I made, and if you look at the, on the bottom, the total balances were $1,640,000, less than what we had last month, and, but we're still in very good shape there. Wire transfers, I made two wire transfers from March 27th to April 24th, one for $750,000 on March 30th, and one for $600,000 on April 4th, so for a total of $1,350,000. And that's from the Liberty Bank Municipal Sweep account to the Citizens Bank General Fund to cover pretty much accounts, accounts payables. Our ECS monies, our Education Equalization Grant monies, we'll be receiving one half of our total. We were, for the fiscal year, we're, it's $1,671,457 that we will receive. We were, for the fiscal year, we're, it's one million six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars that we will receive. We've already rece-, and that's paid out in three installments. Receive, receive a quarter in October thirty-first, a quarter January thirty-first, and we're gonna receive a half on April thirtieth. So, by the end of the week, we'll have another eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which takes care of our, our fiscal year. And as far as debt service, the next payment that we have due is for the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project Expansion through the USDA Department of Agriculture. That payment is for twenty-three thousand ninety-nine dollars. That was originally opened on June twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, for six hundred and five thousand, two point two two five percent. It's a fixed interest rate for forty years. So, we've made six payments to date, so we have thirty-four remaining. But our principal balance is five fifty-five, three eighty-four on that. And I think that's, that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Why don't you move the ARP to a higher interest rate? If you said we can earn as much as possible there.
The ARP, as far as the ARP monies go, in fact, that one, I, I just had to sign a paperhead. Because we, the way it was set up, we had it under a, what they call a clipper ship account. And that, you get a rate of interest depending on the balance of the account is. But you don't have any check writing privileges on that account. And of course, we're gonna be doling out those monies right now, pretty good clip. So, I had to change that to just a regular money market account, which has check authorization. So-
Oh, you're saying the Liberty accounts, which are in two point four seven, you do not have the ability to write checks, to move money?
Those are, those are money market, money market accounts. So, what we do is we transfer, we do like wire transfers. Generally, if, if we need any money, that, you know, I just wire the monies into our general, general fund account to take care of accounts, payables, or anything else that's-
So, we can't intermingle? So, if, if we move the ARP to a two point four seven, and you wish to make a payment, can we move that to the general fund and then make a payment? Or is there an intermingling of money?
I think, I think we're trying to keep that totally, totally separate, we don't wanna co-mingle anything. And, and saying, having said that, in fact, it's funny, the first, when Angus and I were talking initially, we opened up an account, a non-interest bearing account, because we didn't think they could pay interest on that. And I had to close that out and then open up the next account, which was the clipper ship. And then I found out, well, when it, when we have to send checks out, we can't because it's a, it's a clipper ship and they don't, you know, can't do that on that particular account. So, we had to do it the money market account. So, but having said that, we're gonna be down to about three hundred, three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars pretty quick. So, I don't think it's really, not much interest.
It's not a long-term account.
Well, you know, not to split hairs, it, there will be some, some of these monies that are not gonna be spent until July twenty-sixth. They won't be substantial amounts, you know, but we will have the money for a good number of years.
Oh, okay, so I can, you know, I can certainly, you know-
Yeah, let's, let's talk about it and see.
Okay, okay.
All good? Good. I, one quick question?
Yes.
And I've, I've had it in the five years I've been on, the Deep River Garden Club.
Do you own the Garden Club?
No, but, but it, that bugs me, because it's not a town, it's not a town club. And for some reason, from what I understand, that was way back in the day, that they're using our tax number or something for whatever.
I believe that's-
And as far as I'm concerned, that, if that's a town account, I, I, I don't know if it's as simple, but Tom writes a check to them and we close that account out and get it off the town. But, because it's not a town agency, it's not a town club, it's not run by the town, it's not managed by the town. It might have been, and it should not be, it should not be on that account.
I think that is true of the Memorial Fund as well.
Yeah, they use the town's tax ID number, so that's-
Yeah, yeah.
So, it shows up under the town accounts.
But if you, in, you know, that four thousand dollars is listed in your, your totals.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And it's not town money, it's their money.
And it is, to your point, I mean, it, if we were to count pensions, the auditors actually have to look, because it's on account. The auditors, I mean, it's truly pennies.
Yeah, the Memorial Fund is, is kind of, I mean, it's the same, but it's different for-
Memorial Fund.
The Memorial Fund, which is town oriented and all, and not that the Garden Club is-
Again, let me split hairs.
I know, exactly.
I guess having said that, the-
It's a committee that's formed by, through Deep River-
Yeah, but the Garden Club doesn't have any of that.
A genism, a minisum.
Of course, I mean, we're, we're talking forty-two-
It's only forty-two in the hogs.
Do they call upon those dollars periodically to plant around town?
Yeah. And they have sales of flowers and different things to raise funds, to keep that fluid. No, no, town funds don't supplement that, but it does-
We contribute to that, there is dollars in our budget for the Garden Club, we keep in the general fund.
Yeah.
But aren't they, aren't they oriented to approving the town, isn't that what-
Well, that's why, you know, when I was splitting hairs with, with Jim, you know, to say that the Veterans Green Committee is for the town, you know, for the town, Garden Club is not, I don't think that's quite right. I think they pretty much run a parallel road, that, that yes, the Garden Club spends their money on flowers for the betterment and the beautification of our town. I never know if that's a good word, but beautification of the town. So, you know, they, the money's there, it's, I don't, I, I understand exactly what Jim's saying, and I don't a hundred percent disagree with him. But it's, you know, they'd use, it is all, both of those funds are there for the betterment and the beautification of the-
You know, having said that, we have the Rotary Club, the Deep River and the Garden Club are working together and back of the library, which, you know, we're trying to-
Yep, and the green and the gazebo.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, so.
So, what's the advantage to the clubs to be listed on towns?
They, they have the tax, when they purchase flowers, they don't have to use, they don't have to pay taxes on it, because the flowers are being used by the community.
And how is it a detriment to the town then?
It's not a detriment at all, I think just, Jim is just saying it skews the numbers a little bit, because these are, these are two funds, and tell me if I'm not hearing a hundred percent, they're two funds that, that you and I and this group doesn't have any control over, the Garden Club does have.
Yeah, that's listed on, on our sheet, there we go.
Is there another way for them to get the tax benefit without?
I would suggest if they became a five oh one C three or whatever the heck that, what it needed to do.
So, they don't have any formal charter or anything?
I don't have any, if they do or not, I don't, I don't know.
I just throw it out there once in a while.
I assume we do the bookkeeping and Tom, so it's apparently, must be a marginal cost, but they're, it's a good question. Same as Drew, running with the memorial restoration upstairs, Jim?
Yeah.
They are, see, they are a tax-
That one has just been sitting there with the same balance for, for some time.
We are spending that money actually right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We are being, we the town, we the Memorial Fund, committee?
So, will that actually be closed out, or are they just gonna-
That's the hope, is that it's closed out.
Okay.
That's, that's not, not a fund that's supposed to be fluid, that was the hope, you know, that it's there to be spent.
Yeah, that's been sitting there for a while. Any other questions, me? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Angus, selectmen recommendation or news or updates, how would you like to-
Yeah, no recommendations, you know, we've been working hard on the budget, and I certainly appreciate all of your efforts on that. The report that I would make is that we learned at the end of last week that the Deep River Elementary School Cafeteria Fund, which some of you may not even be aware of, I would not be able to give you a good explanation. But that we will be receiving a check for eighty-one thousand dollars from Region Four sometime this week. Because that, that, that fund, Cafeteria Fund ran a surplus, and they are not allowed to keep more than a certain amount of percentage in their coffers. So, they returned it to us. They, they received their surplus because of the federal funds that have been going into the schools for, for supplying food for, for the schools. Normally, in, in years past, this has been a, a real bane, because they, they run, they ran a deficit for many, many years. And we had to-
It was a couple of years we had to contribute to it.
No, we, we had to contribute to it.
It was many years, many years.
Yeah, so.
So, how about the state, the state, I can't do it. Did not the state, over some relatively short period of time, pay for lunches for all children?
That's why they're running the surplus, because they're, you know, they're buying things and not, not using it.
I just saw some sort of TV commercial about how there's some program to have school lunches paid for, period.
Oh, yeah.
I saw that on TV yesterday, the day before, they have some movement trying to get lunches-
Sex ed or national?
That was, it was on TV, it was on Connecticut TV, I don't know if it's-
I think that's, I think that was a proposal in the, in Connecticut, I just said you're right.
To have lunches paid for, period. I don't know any more than that, I saw the TV commercial, ooh, that's interesting.
That was a commercial?
Yeah, on TV, yeah, on channel three, I think it was.
Well, way off the subject, I watch news from nine to eleven o'clock at night, you could go broke, all the commercials. They're all there with these sad animals, people and everything else. You could be ready to check all night on these things. One of which is, I can't, some movie star wants every child to have a free lunch, or every, certain child, and they certainly find very sad people in the hearts. Where all these people come from, but they're all so sad, and, and, anyway, that is not the subject. All right, well, thank you. All right, folks, if, I believe the next issue is for this board to authorize us to present tomorrow night, the proposed budget to the town. So, hopefully, we are all in agreement, but I sent to you on Friday or something what I perceive to be the final version. Let's see if I can begin to use identifiers. I would like tomorrow to present to the town, the budget that we have been working on, which is proposed expenditures of nineteen million nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and fourteen, no, nine million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars and forty-nine dollars. Maybe you didn't commit that, but we have had, we have an anticipated mil rate of twenty-eight point nine eight, which is an increase of point nine mils. I can continue to be, give them more detail. That will leave us at the end of, we expect that that will leave us the end of June twenty-four with a surplus of about ten point two eight. Does anyone need any more identifiers? That is what we'll take to the town tomorrow night. Can I at least have a, a yes to that? Everyone in agreement, that is the budget we should take? Can I have a, an official first, second? Give me a first?
Give you a first.
Give me a first, can I have a second? Go on favor of, hopefully, you agree taking this to the town tomorrow night, please say aye. Thank you. There is an agenda out there to publish. After tomorrow night's hearing, this board, the boards will meet, certainly the Board of Finance will meet. We will listen to what is said by citizens, and we will decide whether we wish to change our budget based on any of those. Hopefully, tomorrow night, we will know it's, this is the final budget that we will send to the May fifteenth public meeting, town meeting, okay? It will also be tomorrow night, we will decide, this is the final budget that we will begin to publish in the newspaper. Begin, publish the newspaper. We are going to publish in two different newspapers, is that the decision? The-
We have to-
We have to publish the budget.
Just to fit the, to fit the, the law, we wanna get it in the local paper. But they publish on Thursday, the town meeting is on Monday, and that does not have enough time. Joyce can quote it better than I can.
So, we will meet our publishing by publishing in the Middletown Press?
Middletown Press, which is a local paper.
That is the paper, the monthly newspaper. So, tomorrow night, hopefully, we will agree on what that budget is, so that it can be sent off to printing. All right? With that in mind, unless anyone has any other issues, let us move to the monthly budget report. I shall bring up, let's look at expenses first, all right? This is April, which would suggest if we spend everything on a straight-line basis, we would have spent eighty-three percent of our budget, leaving approximately seventeen or eighteen percent of our budget remaining. If we use that as a identifier of things to talk about, we can look at the budgets. I mean, I'm gonna look at expenses, April expenses. So, and again, let's use my rule of thumb, eighteen, ninety-three percent as what should be left. Salaries are on, I'll just focus, start, start our conversation on selectmen, the first item. Salaries seem to be right on budget. There's a couple items that, no, a item, it is the item we talk about all the time, selectmen. Engineering services of four thousand dollars has been over expended. And I assume you will continue to over spend the engineering. And again, that is for, I assume mostly, it continues to be at the-
Almost all of it has, has to do with the transfer station or the MS four.
And if you remember, in the proposed budget, we have moved that number to closer to fifteen. And again, most of that is driven by the need to continue to work at the transfer station. Is there a date certain that we must do our capping, is that the right term?
No, there's not.
Okay.
I mean, we have to do it, but there is no deadline that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I, I wanna correct myself too, that this engineering does not go towards MS four. But there is also some, we're, been hearing a little bit about some potential for pollution into the ponds. So, we're doing some additional testing of what may or may not be going into there, just to ensure that they're safe for the spring and the summer.
Okay, let me repeat what I think, you've got our, our transfer station.
Yeah.
It has-
No, 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 this is totally separate, the transfer station is a transfer station.
Oh, got it, got, 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 I got.
The pond, the swimming hole, pond, pond and ponds that go down this stream.
So, you're doing some engineering, that private firm may be leaching into our-
We're just testing our water to ensure that the, the firm, that the quarry already were acquired and reports to DEP all the time, as does the transfer station. But we've got a lot of truck traffic up there, and there are a lot of citizens that are concerned about what might, may or may not be in the water. So, we're testing for a lot, a lot more than we normally test for. So, that's a little bit of what's going into this as well.
Some wisdom being concerned, good, all right. That was the only one in the selectmen budget that I wanted to draw to your attention. I, I just, and we won't do it anymore unless you so wish. I have hinted to you that I do believe we will end the year with budget expenditures that will not, I could do this better. We will come in lower than what the budget expenditures, I do not, unless you so wish, go, want to go line item. But you can certainly see that selectmen have twenty-seven percent left, we've got two months to go. So, I again think that there is going to be some surplus, not a lot, but there will be some surplus in expenditures, so. So, I'm moving on, and we won't do this forever. Expense, elections seem to be thirty-one percent, thirty-two percent. Have we already spent money for the referendum? I see the printing expenses have gone, we've overspent printing expenses, is that because of the referendum coming?
My guess is that they're putting ballots together or things like that.
And, and I think I'm a little concerned, and I will let you take it. We are not, our two registrar voters have not met all of their training obligations?
That's correct, one is Brand, one is Brands Bank in New, and the other is a couple of years in at this point.
Is there exposure to the town if there is a mistake there? If they are not properly trained?
I don't know, they're certainly are certified, I mean, they have, they've gotten what their needs-
Both of them have, okay.
They are, they are elected, so they are, that's what they're-
Oh, is that okay?
Do, they, they do have classes they need to take. They, those classes used to be very limited in what was offered, because they had to drive to UConn or to Hartford. Now, they can take them online, I anticipate that they will be getting them.
Town hall operations, again, we're right on budget there at the eighteen, but I am, I guess I'm happy. It looks like fuel, we have, we still have three thousand dollars left. What do you think, you, you confident that we'll make it, or do you think we'll go a little bit?
Well, we're not burning any more gas on heat.
Okay.
I don't say carbon. No, it's freezing.
Still early April, all right, is that, that scene?
It's, well, we, we anticipated that was, that was a, that was a shot in the dark.
Yes, well, it could be a good shot.
I think it was not bad, we remember that's not just heat, but it's also for our trucks and things like that. I expect we're gonna go over it.
With that shot in the dark, you, you're just about there for telephones across the system. And we adjusted that in the budget, so can I assume that we may go over that number a bit?
Yes.
Okay, a lot, a little bit, you have no idea?
Yep, no, I think we'll go over it by about 10%.
About 10%?
I hope not, but that's not something that's seasonal, that, that's...
All right, and I was taken aback by the overage on the sprinkler system.
Me too. And I, I don't know why that is. I, I am...
Oh, it's a sprinkler and elevator?
Yep, no, I anticipate that that's a, that's just misup.
Oh, you think it missed?
Yeah.
Took a bite, sorry. All right. Anyone else who wishes to? Again, I, I'm not going, unless anyone wants to stop anywhere in particular. If you look at the bottom line on most of these departments, there seems to be a hint that they will not spend the total amounts. And I will continue to look here. And my employee benefits, and Angus and I had a conversation. There's a substantial amount of medical that has not, $60,000 we have not paid. That just can't be right into today's medical cost. We will be under budget since we increased it by 7% next year, but we shall...
No, I don't think it will. Remember that, remember that's actually, if you go by the percentages, that's actually a little bit low than...
And pensions, we have not yet made our pension payments. Something we will deal with soon, okay? And the fire department is surprisingly under budget by a surprisingly high dollar amount. But they generally pay, spend all of their money.
Yeah, they, they usually wait until spring before they do a lot of their things. And remember, we've got a pretty substantial repair of that ladder truck that's going to be coming up in front of us pretty soon.
Are you encouraging them to do that in this budget, or...
I don't, they don't have it in their, they don't have it in this budget.
If there's 51% of their budget left, should they take that over?
Well, I, I, we, we have to look. Vehicle maintenance is, they've only got $9,000 left of that. And I think this is a $25,000 repair. So, you know, we can, we can work with them and see if they can find in equipment and supplies. My hope is, frankly, that they don't have that surplus there because that would mean that they, we over budgeted for it. So we'll have to come back and talk about how we're gonna repair that.
Let's not, we have a brief conversation on highway department salaries. There's 19% left, which puts them right where we think they should be, which then creates this mystery. We increased the budget this year because of there was, employees have their budget, have step ups, union step ups. And so, and we did not have a lot of overtime this year, which certainly brings home your thought that we need to address these wage increases they have gotten during the year. We have had cover because of the overtime, expected overtime, but, so I think what we did in the budget, this would indicate was a wise move, face up to...
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's exactly what we needed to do if we wanted to have a buffer for storms.
Nothing else. I was a little curious on parks and rec. They have overspent their new programs.
Yeah. I don't know how that could be.
$5,000. Not sure I'm seeing it revenue. I don't know how that could be either.
No, that, that's, new programs is overspent by $123. What's, what's self, self-funding programs?
That's right, it's the self-funding programs, yes.
Yeah, and that, I don't, again, that might be basketball. Basketball is a woefully short on participants. But I don't, I don't know, we have, we can ask Carol for details.
It intrigues me, this group, they, they spend, but they don't generate all the revenue that we assume.
Where is the revenue for that? Did you, did you look at that?
I did not. We will when we get there. I did not.
So that might be offset then.
That's the hope, okay. I see nothing else unless anyone wishes to. Capital seems to be doing okay. Yes, we shall not get into that, so, all right. If you were to look at the bottom line, and it is an awkward thing to do, I'm not sure why I want to say that, but we have underspent, at the end of April, we are underspent budget by 4.3 million dollars. And I don't know what to do with that other than to give you encouragement that I think we will, we will come in, our expenditures will be less than budgeted. And that is a global statement to make.
I don't think it's gonna be dead, but I think there will be.
We can't give you the magnitude, it certainly gives me... If we were to now turn to revenues, and we'll do another quick pass through revenues. At the top of the revenues, you can see that we are less than, what, about $35,000 less than the budgeted property tax. If you remember, we assume that people will pay 90, we will send out tax bills. We will receive 98% of those tax bills in this fiscal year. We are pretty close to receiving that 98, so it continues to be a good, good assumption, I think. Property taxes in arrears, we budgeted $120,000, we are up to $270,000. Some of that is the houses that we had to sell for back taxes, but that is still a substantial number. Interest in arrears, we budgeted 57, we're up to 153. Motor vehicle supplement, we budgeted 120, we're up to 135, 136. So we should take comfort that that portion of tax revenues are coming in on budget. I'm going to, unless anyone wishes to stop, I'm gonna take us all the way down to the bottom line. If you see, we're short revenues of $540,000. This number assumes the number that, that the educational reimbursement of 835, 836 has not been received. Tom told us that we will receive that at the end of the month. That would mean this report, bottom line, hints that we are at least $300,000 over budget for revenues. So, so I...
I know, so on the short-term investments, it's, it's incorrect because it's, it's pretty much picking up what was...
I, that number of 50, what is it, 55 has been fairly constant for a while. Are you suggesting that it's too low?
Too low, yeah, the, the only thing, let me see. I think it should be, yeah, I think it should be higher than that.
Certainly way over budget, but, okay, all right, we won't.
If you look at park and rec fees...
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You'll see, we budgeted 46, oh, I'm sorry, we budgeted 104,000. And we have, we've only brought in 46,000. So that is not offsetting the...
Yes, okay. Makes you wonder, doesn't it? Are you still proceeding with applying for LOSE this year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And in the, and in the new budget year?
The previous year. The new budget year, we will, whether we use it or not this year, we will get LOSE next year.
Okay.
We're going to use it this year. So we will be starting scratch. Right now, we've got two years accumulated. We will utilize that on some roads and on the town green.
That's the 30,000. No, it is in revenues and expenses, so...
That will just be an offset.
That's offset to each other. Okay.
And that'll be, that'll be good. We'll see a couple, a couple of extra trees cut down with the town green irrigation system repaired. And, and hopefully a little more...
Is that this year's or next year's budget? That's for next?
This year's budget.
This year's budget, the current budget you're planning on doing?
I'm hoping to do that this summer.
But you call it the irrigation system of the town green?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, many years ago, we put that system in by ourselves. We did not use the proper materials and they're continuing to spring lakes. There's just too much pressure on the material, the pipes that we used. So we are going to replace that with the proper equipment this year.
Seems appropriate. All right, that is, that's all the excitement that I can offer to you this evening, everyone. Anyone wish to put us in a different direction? We'll join together tomorrow night at 7:00. As I age, I shared with Angus, I picked a conclusion whether we'll do it at 7:00 or 7:30. But I think tomorrow night is 7:00 upstairs.
Yes.
But, the May 15th is 7:30. Important to keep these things straight.
That's why we sent out that calendar, bud, checking it out. That postcard.
I think we should have a town, maybe, not a camp, what do we call them when we do camp laws?
Oh, we're...
We shut down, our town meetings start at 10:30, because I can keep straight. I almost start showing up. One of these 7:00 readings, I'm gonna show up at 7:30, so... All right, everyone, may I have a motion? Don't move, got a one, got a second. All those in favor of adjourning until tomorrow night? Say ah. Thank you, everyone.